Okay, great. We're live on Facebook. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Steinbrooke, facilitator of This Town Hall, which is a township of Franklin Town Hall with Mayor Kramer, and we have Township Manager Bob Vornlocker, Assemblyman Joe Danielson, who's Deputy Speaker of the New Jersey Assembly, as well as Reverend Errol Cooper and Reverend Buster Sories will be joining us shortly from First Baptist Church of Lincoln Gardens. And of course, we have our friends from the local press, PJ Parker Bowman, from the Franklin Reporter and Advocate. And hopefully, we'll have someone from tapping to Franklin, I believe, coming up. And our special guest today, who will be joining us in just a little bit, and I think has just joined us, will be Rabbi Abe Friedman to speak about a new testing program. But I'm going to let the mayor kick us off, and then we'll hear more about that. Oh, as well as, I'm sorry, I don't think I mentioned Dr. Alex Karazi, who is the President of the Franklin Interfaith Council. I got you, brother. I wouldn't leave you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. So I'll give a very brief history of what's going on, and I'm going to be very honest. This is an infomercial for some massive amounts of testing we want to get done in Franklin in the near future. Basically, I was inspired by Assemblyman Danielson's amazingly successful test rounds that he had a couple, three weeks ago. And it occurred to me that networking was all about getting people there. And the one great network we have in town is the Interfaith Council. So rather than have, just have them be a network, I thought we'd teach them how to fish, so to speak, and allow them to be able to be test sites whenever they want to. Reverend Sories got involved at the time. I did this through Assemblyman Danielson, who did a lot of coordination. And Reverend Sories, hello Reverend Sories.
Mayor.
Got us to Rabbi Friedman, who is, and I mean this in the best of terms, he's the force of an army about COVID testing. He will come and sweep you away and do testing. And he is the force that is going to make this happen. And Alex has been instrumental in getting things working. So that's the history behind this. The preempting is, we want to test every person we possibly can. Our motto is, we're going to turn no one away. That's what I have, Michael, if we can have the rest of the people introduce themselves and give their spiel.
Yep. So before we do, I just want to kind of throw out to anyone who's listening on any of the Facebook pages where this is streaming, that this is a targeted Town Hall specifically on the testing program that's being launched. We won't be taking questions on other matters. So just if you can be mindful of that and hold your questions until they're called for. Once the rabbi has finished explaining the program and process, we'll take questions from the local press, as is our custom, and then open it up to questions on the Facebook feed, that is on the Township Facebook page, which is facebook.com/townshipoffranklin. So that's where you find the live feed. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you wanted to do some once around first? And why don't I start with Assemblyman Joe Danielson? If you can unmute yourself, sir.
Good evening. How's everybody doing today?
Doing great.
Mayor, thank you for inviting me to participate in your Town Hall meeting. This is a significant moment in time within the pandemic. It's significant because we brought together a coalition, a small army of people from every corner of our community to deliver a service that is incredibly needed within our community. This COVID virus is probably going to change our society for hundreds of years going forward. And we have to survive it. Part of that survival is knowing who's infected, who's not, protecting ourselves, exercising disciplines. So as the virus was spreading, it came apparent to me that we had limited testing. And you know, that old saying, you know, you gotta take care of yourself, nobody else will. Franklin was hit hard. It was hit hard and hit fast. We even identified underserved corners and underserved communities in our township. And we had to put tests together with the people. I have to stress, COVID testing is not for those who are sick. It's not for those who know they have the virus. COVID testing is for everyone. I want to pull in people who are perfectly healthy, who have no symptoms, have no reason to believe they have the virus. Because some of you have the virus. You're gonna want to know that. You're gonna want to not infect your mother, or your father, your grandmother, or your neighbor, or your immune deficient child, or neighbor. Some of you who think you're not susceptible get infected, who feel perfectly fine, some of you have that virus. And you want to know who you are, and so does the medical community. We don't want to know who you are, but we want you to know that you are one of the people who could potentially spread the virus. Do yourself a favor, do your family members a favor, especially those who are susceptible. And do your entire community and your country a favor. Do it as a service, get tested, wear a mask, wash your hands, and stay away from others if you can avoid it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Assemblyman Danielson. Now going to move on to Reverend Sories from the First Baptist Church of Lincoln Gardens. Welcome, Reverend. Take it away.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the mayor, to the council, to Bob Vornlocker, and particularly to Assemblyman Danielson. I must confess that for the 30 years I've been in Franklin, the last five months have found me in Franklin more than the previous 29 and a half years because I travel so much. And therefore, my staff at First Baptist and through our community development efforts has really been the people on the ground that have made things happen as I move in and out and have traveled around the country. But being confined like everyone else and seeing the challenges that were brought upon us by COVID-19, I made a commitment first to my congregation and then to this community to do everything in my power, based on my experience, my relationships, to add to the response to the COVID-19 that I could. Assemblyman Danielson and I began talking early, I mean, early, about the need for testing. It became clear to us that between quarantine and vaccine, what was going to get us through as a nation would be testing and contact tracing. And so he and I began working our various networks. He being an assemblyman, my being a preacher, he has a better network than I do. But we began working our various networks to at least serve the primary constituents in our respective worlds. My contacts led me to the Governor's Office, and the Governor's Office reached out to me to tell me about Rabbi Abe Friedman. And quite frankly, their description of him was almost too good to be true. And I physically took my staff to a testing site where Rabbi Friedman, the Interfaith Urgent Care Organization, was testing. I took them to New Jersey. It was like a field trip. And what we saw far exceeded our expectations. Not only did they have the equipment, the testing kits, not only did they have the phlebotomist and the necessary staff, they had passion and compassion that made it much more than testing. They made people feel comfortable in a very uncomfortable situation. They made people feel welcome, even though they were strangers. They made people feel empowered because this can be a very intimidating and stressful moment. And so when we saw that extra layer of humanitarian compassion, we decided at First Baptist to partner with the rabbi and his team. And we advertised for about 10 days, and we served almost 1,000 people for COVID-19 testing and for antibody testing. The testing was smoothly. My staff and volunteers worked with his staff. It was flawless. They used our facility. And when I found out that the mayor was making a very unique commitment. Now remember, this crisis, this pandemic has become so politicized that many mayors and elected officials around the country have been preoccupied with political upmanship rather than public service. And when I heard that Mayor Kramer and Bob and Joe had come together to say, let's make sure every household in Franklin is tested. I was moved because it's rare. It's rare that you can get religious, political, racial, and economic diversity unified around a single objective. In New Jersey, I think the rabbi will attest to this, only two other cities have made such a commitment. But what I think we've seen in Franklin is that we have a better community infrastructure to guarantee a high rate of testing than perhaps most towns in the state. I warned Rabbi Friedman, when I called him, that Franklin has more land and a more diverse terrain than any municipality in New Jersey. And he didn't shy away from it. He wasn't nervous about our diversity. He said, bring it on. And I am just thrilled to have introduced to our community a man that I consider my brother, a man whose values are aligned with my values, a man who, in light of this pandemic, he comes almost with a messianic aura. And I just love him. He's humble. He's a servant. And thank you, Mayor, for welcoming him into Franklin. If he does for the city, for the township, what he did for First Baptist and our neighborhood, we will be exemplary in our response to COVID-19.
Thank you, Reverend Sories. Reverend Cooper, will you be offering comments?
No, I will not.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I'll move to Dr. Karazi, Alex, if you want to take it away.
One second before that, Reverend Sories, we know you're incredibly busy. We thank you for your time here. We thank you for all you've done to make this happen. And I certainly will excuse you if you need to go, but you're welcome to stay, and you may give us more insights if you do.
Thank you, Mayor. I have 12 more minutes, but Reverend Cooper is here for the entire.
Who could pass on a little more time on Zoom? All right, Dr. Karazi.
Okay, thank you very much. And you know, this has been such an incredible 10 days or so that we have started to talk about it. And first, I must thank Mayor for his leadership to having a vision to involve the houses of worship. You know, we have about 70 houses of worship in town. And imagine that every corner of our street, we have one or two houses of worship. And they come together and participate in this great effort to serve the community by providing either test sites or encouraging their community members to come and be tested. And we are planning to do that. That's our vision. I want to thank Assemblyman Joe Danielson for a beautiful introduction. And that's a very key, and that we need to remember that 30, 40% of the people, when they get COVID, they may not even know that they have it. We want to make sure they come out and they are tested. And I want to thank Reverend, as well as, you know, Pastor Sories, and Rabbi, again, I can emphasize the importance of the way he has approached, and he has made us comfortable in this township. And most of all, I think it's important to thank all the houses of worship. You know, we have already seven, eight days of commitment so far for testing. We're going to be starting next week on the 27th of July at St. Matthias. Then on 31st, we're going to move to Consalada Mission. On 1st and 2nd of August, we have on First Baptist Church. And then we will move to Baptist Church at, let me bring the lid so you move around. So we will have on the Kendall Park Baptist Church on August 4th. August 5th, we are going to have a Jane Center on Cedar Grove Lane. And August 6th, we're going to have, most likely, we are planning to have it at St. Thomas on Elizabeth Avenue. And Friday, August 7th, we will have at Middle Bush Reform Church. So you can see that we are basically having centers around the township to have the testing done. And all we need is to communicate to everybody that this is going to be done. And Michael, if you could please bring that flyer that we have added for our first two days. Everybody can see this. So the flyer is coming out as we speak. And please send it out to everybody, pre-register. And we have time slots for you when you register, so it makes it easier. And again, I want to thank everybody for all they have done and all the leadership to make this possible. Last night, I was talking to the HRC, and when I told about this testing, the commissioner was really excited, and they are so ready to help this effort as well. And I hope every business beside the house of worship, every organization, every place, they support this effort. This is just incredible, and we will set a perfect example for the nation how a township can come together and test everybody.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Karazi. And the mayor has that flyer that you just viewed on the mayor's page. I assume, Mr. Vornlocker, that Township can have that up on the Township site.
So it will be on the Township website, as well as the Township Facebook page, the Police Department Facebook page, the Township Twitter, Township Instagram. We'll have it pushed out to all of the social media outlets, as well as, sign up for Nixls, everyone. If you sign up for Nixls, you'll get it in a Nixel blast several times during the course of the series of testings that we'll be doing. And so, you know, if you can't make the first, then maybe you can make the second or third, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth. And we'll continue to go until, like Alex said, and the mayor said, our goal is to get at least everyone, one per household at a minimum, everyone tested throughout the township of Franklin.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vornlocker. So you all are liable to see that once or 17 times. All right. So now I'd just like to introduce our special guest, Rabbi Abe Freeman, from the Interfaith Urgent Care, who is going to go through the kind of process and some of the details of the testing program. So welcome, Rabbi Friedman, and thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you for the warm welcome. And it's an honor to be here with such distinguished guests here. And thank you for inviting me. Brother Reverend Sories, it feels like I have to tell my wife that I got to relocate to Franklin Township. That's the way you welcomed me in that beautiful church of yours. And I must say, a very short story, because I know the pastor needs to leave soon. When we went over the list with the Governor's Office of the churches that needs to get the test done, he mentioned, you know, many pastors, but the governor said, my, one of my favorite pastors in the entire state is Reverend Sories. This is a true story. And I couldn't figure out why. I was like repeating himself for three times that it's extremely important that his church get tested, not only tested, but done 100% professionally. And now I do understand, because I call him a dear friend. It seems like, feels like I know him forever. So thank you so much, Pastor Sories, for opening your door and allowing us to do what's right, to bring the testing where it's most needed. Unfortunately, being a community activist and a rabbi and wearing many hats, I see that the communities of color and the communities in general, the poor communities, have not gotten the test needed. And I'm very concerned about it. And there are many reasons. Some are politically connected. Some are just not being able to get the test done in a safe environment. So this idea to test people in churches, houses of worship, like I said in the morning, we were at mosques already in Patterson and other parts of Bergen County. We were in synagogues, churches, and temples. And it's a beautiful picture to see how people feel comfortable to know that not only can they, first of all, they miss their house of worship because they miss praying, especially in time of need. And we're going through such challenging times. So at least if we can come together to provide the free testing, it was a true honor, and I'm humbled to be part of this great team. Alex and the Assemblyman and many others here, and Mr. Mayor, I don't have the right words to thank you for your vision, partnering up and making sure that we're going to do this right. And I'm not going to hold you up. I'm going to just go through the process. And feel free to interrupt me at any time. And I'm going to use Somerset, obviously, as an example with Pastor Sories' beautiful church. What we do is, we identify the locations by the local leaders, such as the local pastors or the elected officials that identify the locations where the testing should take place. Upon identifying the dates and the location, I would physically go down with my staff, my team leader from the urgent care. We partner up with two urgent cares throughout the state that have proven to have accreditation from the state and have proven to have warm personalities with their staff. Should it be a doctor, or a phlebotomist, or just the registration girl, front desk, doesn't matter. Personality is very important when you deal with people that come to a church. That's our priority and our pride. It's not just sticking in a needle or doing a swab and someone knows. This is really something that you do with compassion, you do with passion, you do with feelings, with emotions. And we would come in a few days before to locate and check out the location and the logistics for that particular location. Like I said, either a community center or wherever the test place will take place. We have a checklist that we go through, from staff to equipment, to personnel, to making sure that we have electricity, making sure that we have chairs or tables, from anything big as a tent, if we're doing it outside in the parking lot, or, you know, to a bottle of water, like we did in Somerset. We had water and snacks for people. We go through a very detailed list, what we need to bring at the day of testing. And the key for success is two things. One, the way you promote the test sites. It has to be a collaboration from the local electives and the community activists, the community leaders, to get the word out. That's the key. And getting people registered is number two, is because we need to know how many people we should prepare, how many personnel, equipment, and other logistics, which is extremely important. That's why we created the flyer and the link and encouraged people. Although anybody can get tested, if they walk in, they want to get a test done, and they have not registered, they would still get the test done. We highly encourage that people should encourage others, please register and make sure that we have their data on a system. For example, now we're trying to go back on particular churches to make sure that everybody had a call back for their results. And the only way to do that, if we have people pre-register, so we have a database so we can track and trace. We're also guided by federal government guidelines to hand over information if they were positive. So the government can test them, I'm sorry, can trace them. So there are many benefits to make sure that people pre-register. On the day of, obviously, we would come in with our staffing and equipment and supplies the night before to make sure the setup is done. And then we would gather two hours before the actual testing that takes place to make sure everything is in place. We do a test run that we go through certain steps, and we'll talk about those steps in a minute. And we make sure that it's a flawless, a least painful, least, you know, smooth as possible. So when someone gets into, from the registration through the process of both tests, shouldn't take a long time and make them feel as comfortable as possible. And now I'm going to just describe the testing, the actual test drive, how it works. It's split into four steps. Step number one is, when the person arrives, they would be handed over a form. The form, although they have already registered, the form is important. And we tweaked that form. It was a long form with a lot of details. And we cut back the information so it should be quicker and less amount of time for people. They fill out the registration form because that form is sent with the blood to the lab. So it's extremely important. We have the information, which includes the first, last name, date of birth, if they had any previous or underlying conditions. Once they conclude and complete their registration, they would move to triage. Triage, and let me back up a second. The registration process, once someone completes the form, walks over to desk, the registration desk or table, and hands over their ID. And if they do have insurance card, they would hand over the insurance card. We bring along copy and scan machines to do a copy of it and then put it together with the form. The reason why we're asking for insurance card is because federal guidelines require, if the person does have insurance, to cover the lab cost. They would not be charged, no copays, no, no copays or any deductibles would not be charged because we are under the federal EO, executive order by the president, that everybody can get tested regardless of if they have insurance, if they don't have insurance. And then they proceed to step number two, which is the triage. At most locations, we make sure to designate people to, with thermometers, to take the fever. If God forbid, someone arrives with high fever, we would not allow them into the facility and rather have a doctor walk out to that person, that patient, and give them guidance how to proceed. Because one of the symptoms of COVID, as we know, is fever. So that's the reason why we would have the fever taken by a professional. Step number two is the triage, which includes vitals, oxygen level, listening to the lung, and blood pressure, which takes approximately three minutes just to make sure that whoever takes the test is 100% okay, or is not. You know, we had a few patients that were either dehydrated or were sick or very high blood pressure. And we had to make them aware that they need to see a doctor immediately. After the triage is done, then they would be performed with the two tests. One is the COVID, which is done nasal swab, and then the COVID, I'm sorry, the antibody drawing of blood. And many people have asked us if they can separate, if they just did COVID, if they want to skip COVID and do just the antibody, or if they want to do the antibody and not COVID. We would gladly do one over the both. But we're trying to do both COVID and antibody so it can be easily tracked and traced. And then that's the conclusion. If things go smooth, we have the assistance of the local church and the local municipalities to have at least two or three people at the location to greet people. Although I feel comfortable in Franklin, and I'm, you know, I have a personality to embrace people, and all my staff are the same way. We encourage the local church to have volunteers to greet people. It's just comforting for local constituents and people that gets tested to see, you know, a familiar face and someone that they are already familiar with. So I always encourage, if at all possible, to have some volunteers to help us out, to greet people and usher them in. That makes things much easier. I believe I covered, you know, most of the process. Obviously, it's a lot of pieces and back office and calling back after the results are. Obviously, it's a lot of pieces and back office and calling back after the results are back. Just as a footnote, we used to send our blood to Quest because we thought it's the largest, one of the largest labs. Unfortunately, that worked against us because of political reasons. They treated New York and New Jersey late, to say the least, they used to come back in three, four days. Now, they, I'm happy if I get back 10 days after a test is done and that's absolutely unacceptable. You can't have people sit and wait for 10 days. So we changed to Centers Lab, which is a reputable lab in the local area, we get priority because they're a smaller lab and we get the results back after three days. I like to tell people four days, but after three days, everybody would get a phone call. We're working on a system now to improve the results process because a lot of people called and said, oh, I didn't get a phone call, when in reality, when I checked it, no, they did. But either they didn't have a voicemail set up or their voicemail was full. And then they get aggravated, oh, I didn't get a phone call. They're waiting anxiously for their test. So we're implementing a new system that anybody and everybody that doesn't pick up the phone or we couldn't reach a text message will be sent to that phone, if it's a cell phone, obviously. That please call back the urgent care and the number, we have your test. Obviously, we cannot put the test on the text because of HIPAA laws. And we can't use email for that. But we would send out a text, please call us back. That system will take, will start as of next Monday just to ease the confusion for some people that are anxiously waiting. And we in our center call them back, but somehow couldn't, couldn't, couldn't reach them. I am looking forward to this journey in Franklin. It's great working with, you know, the Assemblyman and his office, the mayor and Alex and everybody else here, especially a big thanks again to Pastor Soros and Reverend Cooper that were so welcoming and patiently working with us to make this a pride for Franklin. This is going to be something that everybody is going to be copying. I bet with you, many mayors will want to do the same. We're ready. Yes, we're an army as Pastor Soros says, but we are a friendly army. We want to come in and make sure that people feel comfortable. And we do it with a compassion, we do it in a holy place as a house of worship. And they should be treated with the most comfort level possible. If I left anything out, please feel free to ask me. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you Rabbi Friedman. So we're going to go to take questions from our local press. I just want to remind listeners, if you have a question, please hold it and we've allotted time for Rabbi Friedman or others to respond. Are there any, Mr. Warren Locker or Mr. Mayor, are there any points you wanted to make or questions before we go to the press?
And just very quickly, no insurance, no problem, no symptoms, no problem. No money, no problem. We're testing everyone, we're not turning anyone away. And you don't have to be a member of the congregation where the testing's going on. We're just, those are convenient spots, we're using those spots. Look, we're obviously, I'm obviously centered on Franklin, but the virus doesn't care about a double yellow line down Route 27. We'll test, we'll test anyone who's going to show up.
And is there, just see a note in the chat, any age restrictions at all?
So if you're under 18, you need your parent with you.
Okay, great. Well, it looks like we have the Franklin reporter and advocate solely this evening. So I'm going to turn it over for questions. Who would like to kick it off? Looks like Bill is unmuted.
Yeah.
Bill Bowman, you're a little faint, Bill.
Hang on. Is that better?
Yeah, a little better.
All right, I just had a quick, actually couple of quick questions, Mayor, or someone said, I think, that your goal is to test the entire township, is that, is that accurate?
Well, our, our goal is to test at least one in every household. We'd love to get the entire township. You know, are we going to succeed at this? Probably not, but that is our goal and that's what we're going to strive for.
Okay. And Dr. Karazi. Dr. Karazi.
He's unmuted.
Yes.
Through that list of dates, a little quickly, could you go through the list of dates again, Mr. Calendar?
Sure. So July 27th, which is Monday, is going to be at San Matthias. July 31st is going to be at Consalada Mission. Then we move to August 1st and 2nd, that's going to be at First Baptist Church. Then we will move to Monday, we have Mondays open right now, August. And then we move to Tuesday, that is going to be at the Kendall Park Baptist Church, which is August 4th. And August 5th is going to be at Jane Center. August 6th is going to be at St. Thomas. We finalize on that one, but I think it hopefully will be happening. And August 7th is going to be at Middle Bush Reform Church.
Dr. Karazi, was it, was it easy to get churches or rather I should say houses of worship to participate in this?
Well, when we explained to them what we are planning to do, they, all of them, they said that they are very much interested and they wanted to learn a little bit more. And this morning we had a, you know, Zoom meeting with Rabbi who explained the process. And I think they felt more comfortable to participate. I believe when other house of worship, they hear how easy the process is, the fact that we're going to have all the resources provided by the interface urgent care. And all they need is provide us a building and parking lot and some volunteers just to greet people. And more importantly, when they realize the type of services that they have provided the community, they will come forward. And already we have a couple of them, they have sent us a note that they're, they like to participate.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill, any follow-ups for PJ, will you be asking questions? You need to unmute.
Well, maybe someone else can answer this, is this the swab test? I know that, but is this a self-administered swab test or is there going to be someone putting it up your nose for it?
No, this is going to be done by a professional. We would have it done by our PA.
Thank you, Bill. Yep, PJ.
Yes. First of all, thank you Mayor Kramer for re-instituting these town hall meetings. I've had a number of people say, what happened to the mayor's meetings? They're starting to look forward to them on Thursday. So that said, also would like to thank Joe Danielson. He's just been a tremendous advocate for getting testing. And whether it's in theory or in practice, I absolutely agree, every household in Franklin County should be tested. That does sound to me like at some point that could be, should be mandatory. Anybody care to comment on that?
I don't think you can make a medical test mandatory.
Like masking can't be mandatory.
Masking is mandatory in certain settings.
It didn't start out that way.
It did not.
It started out voluntarily and there's still people who are questioning and fighting the masking.
Yep.
So it's going to be an interesting road to see how this testing goal and deal to have everyone tested. I personally, I'm out in the public, I'm getting tested every two weeks, whether I want to or I don't want to. And that brings up to me the, also the the return on how quickly I'm getting the results. I'm still waiting for a private practitioner to return results for me from three weeks ago. Whereas Raritan Valley, I was there last week and I got test results back in three days with a phone call, with an email. And yes, thank God, I'm negative. Bringing me to my next point. Tomorrow, I could be in a crowd. Tomorrow, I could contract COVID-19. Even though my test results were negative last week. Which brings me to my point of frequency of testing. Once is not enough. And when we go back to Joe's point, that it could be you. Whether you have symptoms, whether you do not have symptoms, if you have a fever, if your, if your nose is running, if you need whatever it is. Somewhere along the line, I think frequency has to be addressed. Who can address that?
Well, I completely agree. I agree if you've been tested more than two weeks ago and got your test back, that then it's a reasonable time to get tested again. I think the antibody test is important. There was a study of asymptomatic people. I forget the numbers and the details of it, but people who were asymptomatic on antibody testing found positive and then had chest CAT scans and they found a significant number had significant chest lesions. We don't know what that's going to mean 10, 20, 30 years from now and there may be no clear evidence of it in 10 years, but you may still be at risk then. So I, I've not seen CDC guidance on this, but I'm going to go out on a limb. I test people for various things. I get MRIs for various things on less evidence than that or less risk than that. So I feel anyone who is antibody positive should get a chest CT. So even if you're completely asymptomatic, even if you're not worried about anyone else, even if you're not worried about infecting other people, you may be infected and getting an antibody test may eventually 20 years from now be something that's going to help you. So I think all this testing is very important and I thank you for your comments, PJ.
Just to clarify, one second PJ, so just to clarify in the comments that neither the swab testing that's part of this program nor the antibody testing is mandatory. This is totally voluntary. Do you have any further specific questions?
I have one more question concerning the antibody test. When I went to a private physician to have the antibody test as well as the COVID test. My question was, okay, I have the antibody test, it comes back negative, which means that I didn't contract COVID. That did not mean that I don't have it now. It does not reveal if you have COVID-19 now. So I think I disagree on that basis that you can have one or the other and make a choice. I think the antibody test is very good to figure out, did I? But it's not giving you the result of do I? And I think it's the do I that we all are concerned about. Again, anybody, throw that out to anybody who wants to discuss that.
I agree, we all here believe you should have both and maybe some people who only want one. We're not going to turn them away, we'll give them that one. But I agree, if you test positive for the antibody test and you ought to go, and you've never tested for the PCR, the swab or saliva test, then you should go ahead and have that too to find out if you're currently tested, absolutely.
Mayor, may I?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very good discussion to discuss COVID virus testing and the antibody testing. I don't want people to get lost on the fact that regardless of how significant the antibody test is, COVID testing will tell you, should you stay away from your wife or husband, stay away from your children, stay away from your coworkers, stay away from your neighbors, stay away from your grandparents and your aunts and uncles, not to go to a party, not to go to a picnic, not to go to the store. It'll let you know if you could go back to work and feed your family and stay alive and keep all those who you care about and love about alive. It's important for you to know if you are contagious. We should not divide people from, you know, symptoms or no symptoms. We have to divide people, are you contagious or are you not contagious? The antibody test, that's going to be significant, the epidemiologists are going to want that. The trackers, the tracers are going to want to know that. The immunologists and the virologists are going to want to know that. But if you want to know if you could kill your friends and family, you're going to need to know if you're contagious. Focus on that antibody, focus on that pathogen test. Find out if you're contagious and if you are, stay home, relax. If you feel you need medical help, call.
Thank you, Senator Danielson, and thank you to Franklin reporter.
Michael, may I just add one other thing for that?
Yeah, absolutely, Dr. Karazi.
Yes, just, I guess PJ, you mentioned about the frequency of testing. When we talked about this involving the house of worship, our goal was and is to continue offering testing going forward. So even if somebody feels well now after the first test, but within the next two weeks, he or she might say that, look, I might have been exposed. Hopefully we will have a house of worship which is offered a free testing and they can go and have a test there at that time as well.
Thank you, Dr. Karazi. One question that's coming from the chat and is, if someone can briefly summarize, what are, are there any other testing programs currently active in the township and do they include saliva testing?
So the only other active testing I know about is at the Rite Aid in, on Hamilton Street. And that's a self-administered swab test. I haven't heard much about it lately, I presume it's still going on.
So there is one.
20, there's also a facility on 27, the southern end of town.
Right, was there another comment from the panel?
Yes, because I heard the saliva test mentioned. So at First Baptist on August 1st and the 2nd, which is a Saturday and a Sunday beginning, I believe it's 12 noon. You know, we would be administering the saliva test. It would not be the nasal test. So if for some reason people are, have some issues with the nasal and you don't feel comfortable, you know, receiving that test, you're welcome to register for the August 1st and the 2nd and you can go on our website at fbcsumerset.com and register for the COVID-19 and antibody test.
Can you repeat that? Yep, repeat that website for us, Reverend?
Or you can also simply put the, this link in your browser. and it'll take you straight to the registration form.
Yep, FBC First Baptist Church, gotcha.
Right.
Okay, wonderful, thanks sir. There is a question, I'm going to interpret a little bit, but basically asking what about all the teachers? So it begs the question, those who are not residents, teachers who teach in Franklin, is there any resident requirement with these tests? Just straight up, you come in?
No, 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 no residency requirement whatsoever. Obviously, we're doing this to try to encourage all of our residents to come and get tested.
Sure.
This is open to anyone who wants to be tested. And we have a commitment from Rabbi Friedman that is absolutely amazing. And he will have his staff test anyone. And I said earlier, from High Point to Cape May. Now, if they need to get tested, they can come here at any one of those dates and be tested.
Great, so a couple more questions, some we covered, but I'll put them out to you. But the testing is all outdoors, correct? Under, or some outdoors, some indoors?
Actually, most of the tests, Rabbi, you should answer that.
Yeah, so it's premature to answer the question. We are going down to each location. As stated before, in the morning, we prefer inside just because we had a lot of people complaining when we did it outside, such as Jersey City and others, that it's extremely hot and they feel uncomfortable to given blood under the sun or in the heat, especially next two weeks, they say, heat waves. So we prefer to do it inside if there is, if the space allows, if there's, if the space is okay. And if not, excuse me, we'll stay outside. Or at some, at some locations, we split them up. We did the registration outside. Soon the person arrives, they would be given that, that, or with a form to fill out, so when they approach the church or the center, they would get in after their registration. So when they approach the church or the center, they would get in after they're registered just to do the, the testing and the triage. So the short answer is, each location will be decided according to the need and according to the capacity of the location.
Thank you, Rabbi. One question coming from the feed. Will there be any special considerations, accommodations for senior community, older adults, and also, not just in terms of onsite for the testing, but also notifications and outreach?
So in terms of the onsite accommodations, when we see, and that's one of our instructions to our team leaders, if you see someone who is with large families and small little children, or seniors, or anyone that's walking with a cane or in a wheelchair, please give them special attention. You know, make sure they jump the line, they get in right away, so they don't have the inconvenience and just wait. So the short answer is absolutely, in terms of onsite. Offsite, I can't answer.
Sure. So we, that may be a consideration for the township folks. I don't know if there's anything underway now, but if there is, speak to it. If not, I'll keep moving. One thing, it sounds like with regard to, you know, people listening, is to let folks know that somebody who might not go because they're worried about a child, you know, having a child in tow, you all can expedite the process for them and offer some assistance, so that's.
If I could jump in here, my, my office already started working on some outreach. So there is pockets in our town of inambulatory people that are generally healthy, but they just can't move around. We're making a list, and I'm going to come up with a plan to bring the testing to them as much as we can. The saliva test is really the best test to do that. It's the safest, it's the easiest, and can be administered probably quite quickly. But my office will be looking for help doing that as well, and I'll probably partner with the House of Worship again on that.
Absolutely. If I may jump in, in Newark and Elizabeth, we went to senior centers to do testing. So if there are like a large housing complex, or where you know that seniors are located, or people with, we would come in.
We'll look into that in the future, now that I know that.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you. There was a question, let's see, with regard to maybe Reverend Cooper, or I don't know, if, if there are saliva tests available, such as August 1st and 2nd, is the turnaround time different from the roughly four days for the swab test?
The, yes, the saliva test, the turnaround time is very quickly, about two to three days turnaround. They will get results.
Great. Okay, so, so a little bit quicker. Let's see, what do we got here? I think we're getting close.
I want to be clear on that. That's not inherent to the test, that's inherent to the lab.
Yeah.
Yes. I, I had a swab test, and I had it back in less than 24 hours. It's, it's, it's all about the facility doing the test.
Yeah.
Great, 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 great. Okay. So, and there's a question about a full listing of the sites, so we'll, go ahead.
I, I'll just touch on that. So, so if you've seen me looking down often on this particular Zoom meeting is because I'm looking at my phone, communicating with one of our staff members who's preparing the initial flyer with the hyperlinks in it, that'll be posted on our Facebook page. As I said earlier, social media, the township website. The first two locations on that flyer, which if you want to bring up on the screen, Michael, the first two locations being Monday at St. Matthias, it's Monday the 27th, and then Friday the 31st at the former Consalata Mission site. Those will be 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday the 27th, and again, Friday the 31st. The second flyer, look for it on Monday. It will list all of the sites that will be hosted the following week, with the kickoff on the weekend at First Baptist Church on the 1st and 2nd, and then followed by Tuesday through Friday, the first week of August. All of those dates and the link to register will be on the township website, and again, be out on all of, all of the social media outlets. Not only the townships, but I'm sure that you'll see it on the Houses of Worship, and the mayor, and, and all the others that, that people would ordinarily check for information like that. Assemblyman, I'm sure you'll have it on your page as well. So that, that's the answer. The dates are again, Tuesday through Friday in the first week of August, but again, Monday and Friday of this upcoming week, and that will be.
Michael, do you have any questions specifically for the rabbi? We had promised him limited time.
Yeah, I think, I think actually, I think we're good with questions. It's 8 o'clock. We're going to set a record tonight, which is excellent. But I want to give an opportunity for the rabbi or any of the panelists to just make any quick comments, and then we'll close out the town hall. And, and I also want to specifically just make a clarification that although we've had mayor's town halls, town halls on the mayor's page, this is actually a town hall that's sponsored by the township itself. So it looks similar, but, and I'm happy to volunteer as facilitator, but we want to thank the township for it, because of the nature of the collaboration, that's where this is coming from. So thanks, everyone, and maybe I'll, why don't I start with the rabbi, if you want to give any.
Right, because I have to, yep, thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'm jumping on another call. I just wanted to thank everybody for listening. And remember, this is something that we are going to make people's lives and change to the better, and we're here to do it as smooth as possible. If you see on the first side that we need to tweak or correct something, feel free. Just grab me the side, tell me, let me know, and we'll definitely do it. It's not necessarily one rule for all churches. We're going to be flexible and making sure that people are comfortable. In the meantime, feel free to text or email me or call me at any time, and I look forward to seeing you at the test site. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rabbi Freeman from Interfaith Urgent Care. We look forward to seeing you and your team around the township. All right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Rabbi.
And you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very quickly, a lot of people thank me for what I'm doing. I want to make it very, very, very clear. This would not have happened without Joe Danielson. This would not have happened without Reverend Soros, without Alex, and without Rabbi Friedman. I, I was a small part of this. I linked people together. I had an idea. But these people deserve the credit. Let's get every family tested. I know we won't, we won't get everyone, but we, we want to try. We want to get tens of thousands of people tested.
Right, and I know we'll all be mobilizing to get the word out and get the flyers around. There's a question about that. Township manager Warren Locker, just the parting words?
I, I honestly, I think that everyone has covered it. I, you know, we're very enthusiastic. The township staff is, is trying to pitch in at where they can, police department's helping out where they can. My, my office staff and, and to the flyers, we'll certainly have flyers printed up and distributed through the town as we can. And, and we look forward to being able to offer this service throughout the township and, and get as many people tested and make our township safe. That's it.
Great. Thank, thank you, sir. And Reverend Errol Cooper, and we also had Reverend Soros from First Baptist Church of Lincoln Gardens here earlier. Thank you for your partnership in, in the program and participation on the call. Some parting words from you, sir.
No, well, I, I am so glad that, you know, we can be part of this great effort to maintain the health and safety of our people in Franklin Township. And I'm so glad to be a part of the effort, and I'm, I'm excited about it and praying that we will have great success in this effort.
Great, thank you. And Dr. Alex Karazi, president of the Interfaith, Franklin Interfaith Council.
I, I'll just extend my great appreciation to everybody, not only a great team. It's just amazing how wonderful township we have, but I also want to thank everybody else from the House of Worship that they're volunteering to help this effort, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Alex. And finally, you can close this out. Assemblyman Joe Danielson.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead. You get a final word, man.
Wasn't prepared for that. So let me just say this to everybody, to surround the community. You don't have to be an army soldier, or a police officer, or a firefighter to save a life. You can simply save a life by getting tested. If you think you're immune to this virus, you're wrong. It's important and even more effective for you to bring everybody in your household down to get tested at the same time. You don't want this virus ping ponging within your own house. Calm down, take the time, you're going to see lots of people you might know, you might make new friends, but stay six feet or more apart, and get tested. The First Baptist Church, when they're testing on the 1st and 2nd, they're using the saliva test. It's one of the most accurate tests that you could have. It's real comfortable, easy to do, accurate, reliable, and you'll enjoy the process. Do yourself a favor, be a hero, save a life, and get tested.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, panel, and most of all, for the people listening, please start spreading the word, spread the buzz, take the flyer, share it around, and let's get Franklin tested. Thanks, everyone.